Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Here we're supposed to get a little bit more rain tonight. We certainly got it over the weekend. Welcome to April, too, right? Roll call, please.
Mark Burchard. Maureen Bory.
Absent excuse.
Joanne Shirkey.
Absent excuse.
Artie Bryson.
I'm here and no excuse.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Here.
Crissa Regan.
Absent excuse.
Cindy Valentine here.
Okay. Bill's payable. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve bill's payable, the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars and thirty-five cents.
Support.
Motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We have our supervisors report. I've been doing a lot of work the past couple of weeks on our budgets, pounding them out. It looks pretty good. So I've been talking to the department heads and everything. Have a wish list and priorities, you know, let me know. We submitted for another federal earmark a couple, you know, since last two weeks we were together and to pay for Phase Two of our water main project. That would be Anchor Bay Drive to Ira. We did it through W. Stavinal's office and Gary Peters' office. And it was kind of a good sign. We received some questions from our application for this grant that we submitted through Lisa McLean's office and they emailed us, it was like a late Thursday and we had it done by Friday at eleven o'clock and and I looked, I was actually at a time in central time zone, so that cut another hour off, but PCE helped me out and we got it done. Thank you Anthony and Laura. Talking to them, they had over sixty applicants and they had enough money to fund like about fifteen of them, so twenty-five percent. And I know, because I talked to a few others, not everybody did receive those questions, so it was I think a good sign that we did receive them and I think that project's going to score very high, so I'm fairly confident we should be successful on that. We are working on, with the state, for a funding solution for a wastewater treatment plant for San Souci and we're looking at this new technology that actually uses algae to treat the water. It's pretty cool stuff. Finalizing the agreement for the authority for the wastewater treatment plant. It's going to be called the MUA Municipal Utility Authority. And truthfully, I thought I'd have contracts for us to review and go over for this meeting, but more than likely it'd be next meeting. I set up, I think I got dates for five union contract negotiations coming up this April. I'm getting ready for those. And I did submit for a grant through the Michigan DNR Trust Fund for the outdoor exercise equipment that would go in our park. And that's not as nice as the Spark Grant, because Spark Grant pays for a hundred percent, where this would pay for seventy-five percent. And so we should know in a couple, three months for that. And then round two of the Spark Grants coming up pretty quick, so I will reapply for the outdoor exercise equipment for that also. Met with some potential investors from a restaurant chain that want to build in Clay Township and it looks like they're moving forward with that. And then also met with someone that they're looking at building a retail store in Clay Township, Long M29. So working on blight issues with the code enforcer for sure and let's see, spring cleanup is May twentieth for the township and then also May twentieth and twenty-first on Harson's Island. So get your stuff ready to clean it up. And we've been doing a lot of work for music in the park and Clay Days and other fun stuff. Clay Days is going to be May thirteenth. Indian Powwow's all set. In fact, I got a meeting coming up with them, I think tomorrow, not the next day and then the block party will be the following Saturday on Harson's Island, that Saturday night where we shut down San Souci and bring in some bands and has a lot of fun, so music in the park is looking good. And I do want to mention, too, we have Miss America Ten, the boat, coming for Clay Days and we'll get our storyboards up and a bunch of other stuff going on, so all the good stuff. And that's my report for tonight. Okay, public comments. Do we have any public comments? Any public comments? One, going twice, three times? Okay, no public comments. Moving right along to the consent agenda. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with reports for the board-approved bills from 3/20, March payroll, the board meeting minutes of March twentieth, twenty-three, and the resignation of S. Walsh, T. Kernan, and J. Shirkey.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have another new business. Have a representative from the Anchor Bay Chamber of Commerce, Lisa Thomas, like to speak to us. Hey, Lisa.
Hello there. Good evening. As he said, I'm Lisa Thomas. I'm with the Anchor Bay Chamber of Commerce. And I am here tonight to talk to you about having Clay Township represented by the Anchor Bay Chamber. I'm also, full disclosure, I'm also meeting tomorrow with the city of Algonac to do the same presentation. So part of the reason that we would like to represent the community is that you don't have chamber representation and you really haven't had it for a long time. I was the executive director of the Greater Algonac Chamber in two thousand eight and two thousand nine while also maintaining my role as the Anchor Bay Chamber president. So I kind of did dual chambers back then. And that's probably the last time that the area has had a paid staff person to represent them. So I'm a lifelong Clay Township resident. So without taking on this chamber, the Anchor Bay Chamber would be doing just fine. But I live here and since I've taken on the role, I'm still kind of the person that they call for chamber stuff in the area. Anchor Bay gets a lot of tourism questions at our office, which is for this area, which is no problem. And I promote all the events, but we kind of like to make it official. And making it official would actually encourage the businesses here to join our chamber. So right now, when we approach them and let them know that we're here for them, we do have a handful that are members here, but most will say, well, we have our own chamber. And like, no, you really don't have your own chamber. So I'm here just to talk a little bit about the chamber and get some support to make it official. So currently, we have about three hundred and thirty members. And we serve the areas of Chesterfield, Ira, Lennox, New Haven, and New Baltimore. We're housed in New Baltimore. We have quite a few members in Fairhaven and Ira. We've got about five in Clay and about eight in Algonac. We specialize in those communities, but we also have members all over Macomb County, all over Saint Clair County, and we even have a few in Oakland County. So the reasons that businesses would join the chamber is for networking, access to business resources and training, discounts on products and services, visibility, credibility, and then promotion. Some things that we would do for the businesses in the Clay community would be, one, list Clay Township in our community profile book. We produce fifteen hundred of these books every year. And the communities that I mentioned earlier are highlighted in the book. So that was one of the things Clay would be added to the book as a profile. We get a lot of requests for tourism information and we mail these books out to those requests. I take these books everywhere I go, every chamber event. We deliver them to all the municipalities, so there'd be some available here. And they're actually a very nice book and they pay for themselves with advertising. It wouldn't cost Clay anything to be part of it, because we don't charge our municipalities anything to be part of our chamber. So that's a pro right there. We would also add all your dignitaries to our list, so that we can keep you involved in what's going on in the chamber in both counties, because we're on the border, we're involved in both. We have six networking groups in our chamber right now, so we would be interested in starting a networking group that focuses just on businesses in Clay and Algonac. And the six groups are very successful. They range from having eleven people in them up to twenty-two. We would also want to host a state-of-the-community address in this community and also a meet the candidates. Those are two things I think are missing in these communities. We currently have some networking groups or some education and some networking events that we do. One's called the Power Hour, which is business-to-business education, and we rotate those all over our service area. So we would be happy to rotate some of those into this area as well. We have a Coffee Connection every month, which draws about fifty people. And it's a great opportunity for the businesses to do a commercial and learn about other businesses in the area. We would rotate those in this community. We have a Women's Network, meets monthly, same thing, rotate that into this community. We are already hosting an Anchor Bay Idol Series and last year we had a few of those events that were in this community. We had one at Cabana Blue. We had one at Johnny Legas. Our women's group met at Legas last year, because those businesses are both members of the chamber. And we also would promote county stuff to the local businesses, because like I said, we're right on the border here, so we have access to both counties. Some of the community events that I might be interested in helping with on behalf of the chamber would be bringing back the Slow Roll. When we had the Slow Roll a few years ago, I was the one that managed that and I enjoyed that event and I thought it was fun, so I would be interested. And that would be one of the priorities I'd want to bring back. So I'm very blessed to say that I have a very strong, hands-on Board of Directors. There's thirteen board members at the Anchor Bay Chamber. We have twenty-eight chamber ambassadors, which are board volunteers that help us. They're business volunteers that help us. And I'm a full-time employee and I have two part-time employees that help me. So we do have the staff and the ability to take on the area, and like I said, it just would be great to have representation in my home community. Does anybody have any questions about the Anchor Bay Chamber?
Remember a couple, about a month ago, I was talking about us doing a pamphlet, Why Live in Clay? And I talked to Lisa about that and they're willing to help us with that, too.
Yeah, and I've already actually contacted a designer and a printer. I just have to get some sponsors for it, so.
And do you need anything from us right now, or?
No, so there's no cost to the municipality to be part of our area. We would want you to officially say that we're your Chamber of Commerce, so that the businesses would want to be on board with us. So however you handle that internally, if you need maybe a proclamation or something in your minutes, or we would want to do a press release after as well. We're funded one hundred percent by dues and by sponsorship. So in order for us to function, we need the businesses to want to be part of us as well.
I'll make the motion. We recognize Anchor Bay Chamber of Commerce as our local Chamber of Commerce.
I actually love the Anchor Bay idea theme for it, because it does allow you to kind of interconnect all of the communities that are around Anchor Bay.
Yes, we're very connected, just along the waterfront area as well, yep. So our nickname is the Chamber with Heart, and we kind of came up with that, because all of our business owners really do care about each other and each other's success. And all of our bankers are friends, all of our insurance agents are friends. Everybody can refer business to each other. And I think that Algonac and Clay would fit into that perfectly as well.
I'll support your motion, Artie.
And for discussion, too, I think when I was back in, being a businessman, I mean, networking groups are awesome to help people. If you could get one or two going around here, that would be great.
And, you know, both this community and Algonac both have a lot of great service groups to kind of already fill in the void for the community stuff. What we're missing is something to help the businesses.
Exactly.
I agree.
They can add a long time, so.
So you put these books out once a year?
Yes, once a year. Yep.
So anybody were to chime in at any given time, there's no inserts or amendments to this book?
No. It's a lot of work, so we just do it once a year. But it's a nice book. Any kind of change would be done on our website, though, immediately.
And you don't go up to Cotlerville or Marine City, or?
Marine City has their own chamber. They have a part-time executive director. That's part of the problem with some of the smaller communities is there's not enough businesses to fund a person that can do the job full-time. Right now, Marine City's got a part-time person. Saint Clair has got a volunteer person. Richmond doesn't have anybody right now and they're getting ready to dissolve their chamber. So we're probably going to reach out and see if they'd like some help as well. We consider it help, because like I said, we're doing great. But we want to help the communities around us, so that they have business representation and business networking and education and all that, so.
Where's the majority of advertisers at, located?
They are all over our service area. So this particular book contains sponsors from Chesterfield, Iver, Lennox, New Haven, New Baltimore. The insert is La Fontaine there in Saint Clair. We don't really have a territory, like if someone comes to us and says we have an Oakland County business. We actually did a ribbon cutting in Oakland County and we had probably forty people there. We were surprised how many traveled that far, but that person had made such great connections in her chamber network, they wanted to go and support her. And that's what it's about.
What kind of a charge do you put forth for the advertisers?
It's a range, so the smallest adds one fifty. It's very affordable. We're a small business chamber, so we make everything affordable and we do a lot of free stuff. All those things I mentioned earlier, the Power Hour, the Women's Network, and the Coffee Connection, those are all free events for our members.
You do red ribbon cuttings, right?
We do. We have the big scissors and the big ribbon and we also do ribbon cuttings for free for our members.
I can't find our scissors.
We have some. We did fifty-nine ribbon cuttings last year.
Yeah.
And we actually had ninety-two members, new members last year, and we had twenty-six events.
What's your membership total about?
Our fee?
No, the number of members.
Right now it's three thirty.
Awesome.
Yes. Yes, it's an all-time high for us. We're doing very well.
Yeah.
Before you leave, can I get a new book? This one's the same as you have.
Yes, you can have a new book, no problem. All right.
Of course, I'd be the one to wreck it.
No worries, I have plenty. And we'll fix that other one. Those are expensive books.
All right, we have motion and support to recognize the Anchor Bay Chamber of Commerce as our, the Chamber of Commerce representing Clay Township. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure we'll be talking to you soon. And next, we have project control with our Saw Grant wrap-up. Anthony.
Hi. So I don't really have any wrap-up on the Saw Grant at this time. What I came for was the engineering proposal that I submitted for that, what you referred to in your supervisor's report from Anchor Bay Drive to Ira Township, the water main. That's pretty important to be, to get it shovel-ready, so that we can be ready for that congressional award. When we get the final draw request in, then I can do a final presentation on, you know, everything related to the Saw Grant. You know, we submitted that on Friday, so so we'll get that going in a kind of presentation format. But, yeah, I don't know if the board received that proposal.
You know what, I probably neglected to do that. What were you looking for again?
Well, it was the water main engineering.
Right.
And I have the proposal.
Is that what went out? No, but I believe you mailed that out in an email from the weekend? When they were asking questions, I think you attached it?
Yeah.
So we did see it. It was reviewed. We just don't have it for.
Okay. We didn't do that last meeting, did we?
No.
Okay.
I have a copy of it here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know if.
And you're looking for?
For the engineering. For approval, yeah.
Yeah, how much was it?
Eighty-three thousand nine hundred dollars.
Nine hundred.
Yeah, and that's topographic surveying and right-of-way surveying, engineering design, submitted to the following agencies for permitting: Eagle, Sinclair County Road Commission, Erosion Control Department, and MDOT. Permit fee allowance, and then contract administration exclusive of the construction phase, so everything up to the construction phase. So that way we have a contract book ready for approval.
This is for the water line from here to Ira?
That's the interconnect, yeah.
Right, the interconnect. And what do we estimate? That would be a little over a million dollars?
Yeah, one point three three. It's on the backside.
One point three.
Yeah.
And we submitted money that you'd be paid for eighty percent approximately, right?
Yeah, yep. That's the congressional earmark.
So we get that earmark, it's going to cost Clay Township twenty percent of that, whenever the bid comes in.
Yep, yep.
Is this engineering part of that? Or is this engineering part of that cost, or is this separate from that?
Nope, engineering's included in the one point three.
In the whole thing, okay.
But we got to get the engineering done to get the grant.
Yeah.
Type thing.
So last time I came, you approved for the project plan. And that included, the project plan included that portion. That's not engineering, that's to prepare. They make us do like a project document.
For the grant.
For the, yeah, to be in the state revolving fund program. So that's covered and we have that to do that. But to do engineering involves field work and an actual preparing of documents and construction documents, so.
That's right, okay.
So that's where there might have been a little confusion.
Yeah, that's what I thought we did approve it then.
And what's the timeline you need this approved by?
I mean, that would depend on the application that we do. We are falling in a SRF program, so it would mean that we need to have all our, well, our draft is due this month and our final is due next month for the project plan. So we would need to get engineering in that same timeframe, at least approved.
You need to get it going.
Yeah, so that they don't, so that when they say, well, have you engaged engineering, we'll say yes and it was approved on X date. And then we have time, obviously, to do it. It's going to take a little time to do the engineering.
Right.
Right.
You have any handouts?
Yep. Do I have any handouts? Well, I have this one, I have the one copy.
Well, you can give it to me later. I don't need to see it now.
Yeah. Breakdown's on the other side. Yeah, that's right.
Well, like I said in my supervisor's report, I feel pretty confident we're going to, you know, get this, because we're now helping out Clay Township, we're helping out Ira and Algonac. And when you do that kind of stuff, it goes, it gets noticed.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, most of them are just.
Can you pass that down here, Mark?
She wanted to see a copy.
You're just helping me or, you know, helping ourselves.
That's what I want to see. I want to see if this is the same one I was thinking of.
So.
Yeah, and so what we did, because SRF programs require you to have your project plan in by the deadlines, so that you meet the different milestones. What we did is we took that interconnect, which is Anchor Bay Drive to Ira Township. We included it in this round's SRF. So, and then at the same time, we pulled that one, that piece out and we requested additional congressional earmark money for it, because we have an earmark already for two point five million that's coming from the Congress for the
Water.
Yeah, Algonac City Line to Willow Court and then the second crossing to Harson's. So what we did is we pulled that third piece out and we said, well, that's enough of a reason. I mean, we're providing redundancy to Harson's Island on that other one. This one, we're providing redundancy to the entire township plus, yeah, plus Algonac. So that, and that, a lot of that has to do with the issues at the plant when we had to shut down and that was a little bit of a scare, because, you know, you don't want to have any, you want to have the ability to feed our system, you know, from an adjacent system, which all other communities have. You know, upriver, they can feed from upriver and then in Ira, they can have New Baltimore feed them in the case of a maintenance issue or a need.
And one big advantage, too, if there's our water supply in the river somehow is contaminated, this would allow us to draw from Anchor Bay, you know, water.
That's right.
Conversely, if our water system was contaminated, we could supply Ira.
Correct.
Water.
Correct.
At some point in time, not unless we have it already, I'd like to see a configuration of the tie-in with the Ira.
Sure.
Water main.
Yep, yep.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we support the engineering, project control engineering of eighty-three thousand nine hundred for Phase Two of the water project of the Ira, or Clay, Clay, Ira, Water Interconnect project.
Supports.
Support.
We did receive that email.
Yeah, we did. And any other discussion right now?
I would just say that I was at a seminar in the fall and one of the topics was emergency management and disaster preparedness and all of that. And one of the people that spoke was Rochester. They were on the very end of that giant water main break. And he was talking about how within hours there wasn't a case of water to be found within a twenty-mile radius. And I just think
Yeah.
my family is involved in water a lot and I think it's so important to have a backup
Absolutely.
if something were to happen and we, you know, we needed another plan. So I think this is so important.
Should make sense.
Yep. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Hey, motion passes. Thanks a lot, Anthony.
Anthony, do you want this back?
Yeah, I got it, too. All right, next we have CE estimate contract for blight cuts. We use mowing madness in the past for doing our blight cuts and they didn't want to renew the contract to perform it, so Roman, our code enforcer, went out and got three quotes and this was the best one. Well, there was one other one that was tied, but he felt he would like to work, he could work closer with this company versus the other one. And basically, this is money in, money out. You know, someone has blighted property or grass, we cut it. Then we send them the bill plus a hundred bucks. And eventually, if they don't pay, it goes on their taxes. But it's pretty reasonable rates and especially compared to the other ones that did give us a quote. So author, I'm looking for approval to accept this quote for doing our blight cuts.
I'll make a motion to approve the estimate slash contract for blight cuts.
Is there a second?
Support.
Okay. Now, motion and support. Any discussion? Because technically it's a contract, so we should do roll call.
How many blight cuts do we do average?
Oh. Do you have any idea? Probably twenty-five.
I was going to say twenty, so yeah.
Twenty, twenty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah. And believe me, we do not want to be in the grass-cutting business. Say that every time. Please cut your grass. But we're probably a month away from that happening, especially with this rain. But, uh, well, we're probably a month away from, from that happening, especially if it's raining. All right. Uh, roll call, please.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Kristi Hiltonen.
Yes.
Hey, motion passes. All right, next, uh, on the agenda is Building Department Elevate to Full-Time Amber Nelson.
She's hiding in the back.
She is hiding in the back. She's been a, a temp, or not a temp, I'm sorry, a part-time employee, doing a very good job. And, um, yeah, would like to elevate her to full-time as is needed. When will this be effective? Immediately, okay. Anybody have any questions for Amber?
How long have you been, uh, doing the part-time work?
Since November.
Yeah.
Any difficulties with it so far? Is, uh, any, uh, incidents you'd like to share with us?
No, it's a process, I'm learning a lot.
It's a process.
It's a process, her routine's kinda up and down, so we're trying to stabilize that, and that way she can just start diving into projects as she should.
And eventually Cindy Babish is gonna retire, and. It's a succession plan.
Yes, it is.
So.
I love it.
Okay.
I will make a motion to elevate to full-time Amber Nelson.
Support.
Motion to support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries, congratulations, Amber.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We didn't make you sweat too much, did we? Hooray. Okay, next, we want to approve the contract for Lance, um, Shirdy. He's, uh, he's been our interim, uh, head of the Water Department, and we wanna make that change. And I get my apology, apology to Lance, this should've been done before now, but we got busy, so.
Well, I for one, know Lance has been doing a remarkable job since, uh, John DeBoer left, and, uh.
John who?
There you go. Yeah, he's been doing a good job.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion, I'll make a motion. To, uh, approve the contract for the, uh, Department of Public Works Supervisor Lance Shirdy.
Support.
A motion to support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Hey, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody claps for me like that.
We do.
Yeah.
Just don't hear it.
All right, uh, pro- proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week is April ninth to the fifteenth. And we have a proclamation recognizing them.
Make a motion to approve the Clay Township pro- proclamation for the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and that is for our dispatch department and the police department.
Support.
Hey, motion to support, should we read this? Mine's really small.
I'll read it off of mine.
Huh? Yeah, I'll read it from yours. Okay. Whereas emergency key, okay, I got it. Emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and when an emergency occurs, the proper response of police officers, firefighters, paramedics, and critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from the citizens who telephone the Clay Township Emergency Communications Center, and whereas public safety te- telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommuners are the single vital link, late link for our police officers, firefighters, by monitoring their activities, by radio, providing them with information that ins- ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Clay Township Police Department have contributed substantially to, uh, the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Clay Township Board, the, the Township Board of Clay declares the week of April ninth through the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the National Public Safety Tel- Telecommunicators Week in Clay Township in honor of the men and women who diligence and professional and keeps our city and township and citizens safe.
Amen.
Amen. That's what we're avoiding on, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Kristi Hiltonen.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Motion passes, yeah, look how small that one is. I've never gotten through that one. Need a magnifying glass. All right. And these men and women do a great job, and that's a tough job, too, to sit behind that mic. Um, I don't know how they do it. But they do. Thank God. Okay, next, uh, for the Fire Department, we have new vehicle purchases. Um, we, we, we approved to replace these trucks through a lease, come on up, George. But, uh, another option came before us, go ahead, George.
Good evening, uh, last year I came before you to lease two, uh, new pickup trucks, one for the mainland station and one for the island. Um, and our trucks came in, the representative from, uh, Enterprise called me, uh, a week or so ago, and explained that, uh, the Chevy Corporation offered a special buy to the My Buy Deals. Offered another, uh, percentage off. Enterprise cannot get that discount. It can only go to two, the My Buy or the municipalities that purchase those direct. Uh, each vehicle would get an additional nine thousand dollars off. Um, so if we go through the lease program with Enterprise, uh, the vehicle would cost around sixty-one thousand. This would be a Chevy thirty-five-hundred HD, that's an eight-foot box, uh, that we would use for towing our boats and, uh, use as a grass rig on the mainland. Um, and that, that vehicle would cost around sixty-three, uh, sixty-three thousand. And, uh, with the additional, with that nine thousand dollars off, uh, it would bring it down to about fifty-four thousand. Now, the H, the twenty-five-hundred, uh, was sixty-two thousand, and that brought it down to, uh, was it fifty-two? I got it written here.
Uh, let's see, where are we?
Uh, yep, fifty-two-eight.
Do they have these vehicles on the lot right now, ready to go?
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
Yes.
And how soon will we be getting rid of the thirty-five-hundred?
Both vehicles would be delivered at the same time. Um, we do have the, um, twenty-five-hundred, the two thousand eighteen, which we would sell. She did not see it, uh, she gave me a, a ballpark figure, a quote for, um, selling that is around thirty-seven thousand. She said it would be more, depending on the shape, and it is in good shape.
Yeah.
Do you believe all that would be wrapped up in this fiscal year, though?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, this be this current fiscal year.
Before July.
Yeah, we would sell that. We also have the, the, um, nineteen ninety-six Ford three-fifty that's on the island, that we could also.
Did we budget for his lease payments this year?
No, we have to amend the budget.
For the other two?
Yeah, but, uh, as far as, I mean, he's got plenty of room there, and, uh, I did the, the, I mean, the return on the lease versus, uh, purchase, um, it, it would be under four years of, of leasing would pay for these veh- vehicles totally.
That's what I have too, yes.
And, uh, if you knock off the price of, uh, selling these two other trucks would be, you know, it comes about forty-five thousand. Actually, the, the lease costs would pay off in two, the payoff would be in two years of leasing that we, we would pay for these.
We did sell, we did sell one of the trucks last year, that two thousand ten Ford three-fifty.
Yeah.
We ended up getting around forty thousand for that, and that was going to, to replace, or one of these vehicles was gonna replace that.
Right.
That's why we sold it.
Yep.
So I see the reduced book value at the end of forty-eight months on a lease, is fourteen thousand two sixty-three for each vehicle. And without doing a quasi-formula math, math, uh, I think we got a, a very good value with the purchase.
Yep, I do too.
Probably make more money at the end of that than we would.
Yes, we would.
Yep. So.
I'll make a motion for the Fire Department to purchase the two vehicles, uh, through the reduced, is it the My Deal pricing?
Yes.
Um, for a hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Support. Can I, can I have you edit that, and, and also, we would amend the budget as.
Well, I would, but we don't have an amount that we're amending the budget, so.
Okay.
That's why I asked if it was all gonna be done this fiscal year.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
We're gonna have a laundry list of budget amendments coming up.
I dug up a bunch of them over the weekend. Okay, we have, uh, support, or motion to support to purchase these, uh, two trucks. Any, uh, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen?
Yes.
Hey, motion passes. Next we have, um, firefighting, uh, bunch of hose testing.
It's hose testing, ladder testing, it's an annual, uh, test that we have to do. Uh, this company that, uh, we have a new company that we're using this year, it's called Fire Cat. Uh, we normally do it around June, July timeframe, but they have quite a few in this area that they're going to do, so they pushed us back. Um, so, um, and we need to get it done. It's part, it's required by NFPA to have it done.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Department Annual Equipment Testing for six thousand dollars from two oh six nine seven one.
I will support.
Hey, a motion to support, it is a budgeted item, um, any more discussion?
My only discussion would be maybe instead of paying it out of, uh, outlay over five, we paid it out of equipment maintenance?
Yeah, we could do that.
There's plenty of room in that, that's two oh six nine thirty-two.
We could do that.
I will amend my motion to line two oh six nine thirty-two.
You amend your support?
Support.
Okay. All right. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, I got one thing about the hose testing.
I did send a email to Superintendent, uh, of the school, Al Latos,
and let him know that we're gonna close down, uh, Muskrat Run on that day. And also, I'll put it on, on my sign-out front, and I talked to Janet and, and Cindy that they would also put it on the sign-out in front of, uh.
What date is that?
The seventeenth of April.
April seventeenth, Muskrat Run will be closed.
Closed from eight AM until five-thirty.
Except for Lance.
Except for Lance.
That's what I called you about today.
Okay. April seventeenth, I'm gonna write that down.
And I'll put it on Facebook too, so everybody knows. Uh, the school's also gonna put it on their webpage, so they can notify the parents, and they'll notify the Transportation Department that it's gonna be closed.
All right, sounds great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, resolution, twenty twenty-three oh seven, DNR, uh, Michigan Spark Grant. Um, basically, we have to pass this resolution, so I can get the, um, oh, what's it called, the, um, I just had it open, I just read the darn thing today. The work, um, agreement, the work agreement approved by the DNR. And it basically says that, uh, we received this grant for five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, zero match. Um, and, uh, basically, we're agreeing that, uh, we're gonna follow the, um, stipulations in the work agreement, how we do the bidding and, and things like that. And, um, how, how, how the grant works, we, we pay for everything, and they reimburse us. So that's what we're agreeing on, um, with this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three oh seven for the DNR Michigan Spark Grant. Do I need to have the amount?
No. Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Hey, motion carries. All right, next we have Board Member Comments. Cindy?
Um, absentee belts have gone out, uh, we mailed them out last Thursday, so if you requested one, you have not received it, uh, go ahead and get ahold of our office, and we will get, get it, make sure it was mailed out.
Yeah, we've been getting a lot of calls about information on this, 'cause a lot of people don't even know about it, that I've talked to. No?
I haven't heard anything.
Okay, all right, just curious. All right, Mark?
Okay, well, congratulations to Amber. Good job, we're looking forward to seeing her behind the counter again. And, uh, Planning Commission is on the fourth Wednesday of this month. I forgot what it leaked.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I just wanna say thank you for Joanne Shirkey's years of service. Um, I know that when I came in, she was a regular, visiting the office once a week, and, um, you know, talking about things that were going on around town and everything, so I really have missed her since she's been gone, and I, I hope she's doing well, and I, I'm thankful for everything that she gave to the township and the island.
Yes, um, congratulations to Amber and Lance, um, and, uh, I love recognizing our dispatchers, the job that they do. And, yes, I'm really heartfelt for, you know, not having Joanne here, she was, she's a friend of mine. And, uh, boy, she'd be in our, in the office two, three times a week. And, uh, you know, I, I always called her coach, 'cause she was a big basketball coach, when she, you know, she coached Bishop Gallagher to a couple of state championships. And, uh, so I always called her coach. And I can remember sit, her sitting in my office, and she'd just say, "Artie, just get it done, just get it done, don't worry about it, just do it, get it done." And, uh, so, uh, yeah, we're gonna miss her on the board, so I'm gonna work on some, getting some resolutions from different agencies to give it to her, so. But she's got over forty years of different boards.
Wow.
On the, in the township, so. Yeah, a lot, lots of, lots of experience, and I know firsthand, she loves Clay Township, so, gonna miss her. And other than that, we have a lot of positive stuff going on in the commu, in the, in the town, and, uh, yeah, it's all good. So that's all, I have one more motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, Mark. Make your motion adjourned. All right, all in favor, ayes. Thanks for coming, everybody.